Mine's worth three.
Actually, I want to go up in the old place.
Alright, we're on here.
Guys, we're gonna start.
Oh, we gotta start real quick. Seven o'clock. Okay. I know. She needs the hour.
I'm taking a shoe off.
Good evening.
I think it's over.
Are you on?
No.
You're on.
I'm not. I swear this is Bob not coming.
He told me what Jean said at book club he was.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. This is the planning board meeting for June third. We have one agenda item. It is Matthew Haskell from the Blaze Orchard proposal up on Dole's Ridge Road. So, the mic is yours. You can just tell us about your latest.
So, here I am back again.
Glad to see you.
Yep, nice to see y'all. So, we've seen project as last year except for we've expanded a little bit. Well, quite a bit. We've added the second phase, which is the production brewing facility, which is a sixty by-
Is this it in red?
Yeah, the sixty by one twenty steel building. And that's where we're gonna, that's where we'll move our production brewing facility to. And we're gonna start making cider as well and seltzer, hard seltzer.
Great.
As well.
Great.
Yeah.
So, what is this gray, um, font?
I don't have one in front of me, actually, so.
Pardon?
So, that's the pavilion that we were discussing last year. That's the timber frame.
Okay.
Food and beverage area. No, it's alright.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you look at the site plan when you come up the road, the first building you come to is the steel building that'll have the brewing production facility. And then down further in the field is the pavilion.
So, you've paid all your fees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
Yep.
We do need to hold another public hearing.
Okay.
I'll first ask if anyone has any questions?
I have kind of a curiosity question. I know from my own experience, taking on something new, you can do a study.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, I guess I have to, why are you coming to Lexington to build this? I mean, I'm just curious. You're gonna be off the road, way off the road.
Yeah. So, we look at it as it's kind of like a destination place for people to go, which is, people like to go and, I mean, look at Funky Bow Brewery in Lyman. Who, you know what I mean? People are like, what's in Lyman? Well, if you went there on a weekend, you'd see two hundred and fifty people sometimes whooping it up over there on their farm.
So, you have done some studies?
Not really, no. I'm just, I like orchards and they have a thirty-year history of doing really good business for about three months out of the year. And I figured I could maybe kind of build off of that. And I'm not really looking to, um, this isn't like, uh, so, it's a production brewing facility and we're gonna do, hopefully, some events there like weddings and other things. So, there'll be a whole bunch of revenue sort of vehicles built into this. But, you know, my mindset isn't like with my restaurant by Harbor where I'm expecting to feed four hundred and fifty people a day, you know? That's not like kind of what I'm thinking going into this. I'm thinking, you know, we're gonna do the orchard, the pick-your-own, add the food and the beverage, um, and, you know, accentuate what they always did. And then hopefully build some sort of a local following. And I think there's quite a few people that live around in the area. The high school over here in Buxton is the second largest high school in the state, I believe, right? So, that must mean that a lot of people live in the area.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, and we're only thirty minutes west of Portland if you drive like me. Um, so, um, you know, people will come out here. I was sitting at, um, Four Street the other night having dinner. And somehow we were talking about, somebody in there knew me or something, and we were having a discussion how, you know, the brewing was going. And I was telling them how I'm moving to an orchard in Limington. Two employees next to him kind of popped their heads and they're like, oh, Dole's Orchard. And I was like, yeah. And they're like, that's, we can't wait. We're so glad to hear this that it's gonna be open again and that you're gonna be doing this out there. So, you know, it's kind of like, um, I'll give you another example, like Bissell Brothers built a brewery in Milo, Maine, you know? And people go there, so.
And it's, you know, this is-
So, this isn't a year-round thing?
Yeah, it'll be year, I mean, we're hoping it'll be year-round because we're designing it so that in the wintertime, all the openings on the pavilion will be buttoned up and then, and Velcroed in. And then we'll be able to crank on that big, huge fireplace in the middle. And then we'll, we have these special lights that we're designed, that we're gonna buy that are like pendant heat lamps. So, you know, maybe we can bring the temperature up in there on a January day. If we crank everything on at eight in the morning, maybe by noon or one on a Saturday, we can get it up into the fifties. And then you get some bodies in there and then it gets up in the sixties. And, you know, we're Mainers, wear your hat or whatever, right?
But you also have the apples there for your cider if you decide.
Yeah, and so, yeah, we're gonna use a lot of the apples for cider as well. Yeah, absolutely. And we hope to do weddings and live music and things like that. And so, where we've kind of buried ourselves back on the orchard, we really shouldn't be bothering anybody back there either with anything that we're doing. It's kind of off the street and up over on the hill, so.
But you are planning to keep the orchard active?
Yeah, not only active, we would plan to plant maybe five or six hundred more trees next year and-
Nice.
And maybe like two more acres of raspberries. And, um, my farmer's even discussing strawberries again, but, you know, weeds are a problem out there, so we'll see what happens with that. But, yeah, we're expanding, we're planning to expand upon that and then use some of that stuff in the products that we make as well, so.
So, I mean, the snowmobiles could come in and use this also?
I mean, I don't see why not. I wouldn't wanna answer that right now, but.
Is there even a trail goes in there?
Yeah.
I don't know.
But we're interested in adding things like that, you know, possibly put a, uh, a disc, a disc golf course out there or something, you know? There's many different opportunities to do things out there. We could have, uh, we could have our own beer festival out there where we invite twenty, you know, twenty other breweries from around New England. And they all show up and we have a little weekend festival out there with live music and food and events and things like that, so.
When do you anticipate opening this?
Well, it depends. So, I, I guess my understanding is that tonight I submit, you folks all kind of give it some sort of a-
What, what happens is we accept your application-
Yeah.
For your expansion.
Yeah.
And then in a couple of weeks, on the third Monday of this month, we'll have a public hearing.
Okay.
Donna will do the advertising and we, most of the time, vote yes or no or whatever-
Yeah.
On the night of the public hearing unless there's something that's brought up that needs serious attention or something like that.
So, really, I, most of my folks can't start work for another two weeks anyways. The only person that maybe could get in there a little early is the guy that's gonna do the road. And, um, you know, I don't think that that is too much of a concern. He'd probably talk to the CEO, of course.
He should, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, but I don't even know if he has time. I'm not sure. But we didn't really have plans to start anything until like the last week of June. And then we were gonna go pretty hard for about five or six weeks. And we're hopeful that maybe by the fifteenth of August, we could have the pavilion open for pick-your-own season and food and beverage. It's pretty aggressive, I know, but we've been lining, we've been lining everything up so that, you know, Rob Hanson can come right in and start with roadwork and septic and boom, boom, boom. So, you know, we're hopeful by mid Au-, mid-August or the last, the third week of August, maybe we'll get to a point where we can open one section and then move on to the next part, which will be the steel building, which will probably take another three months to build that. And then maybe we move the brewery in at the end of November and into early December. That's kind of our, our hope.
Are you gonna pave the road going in?
What's that?
Are you gonna pave the road going in there?
No.
It's a driveway more than a road, correct? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I mean, it's-
You know what?
I said, is it a driveway more than a road? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, I was thinking about how you're gonna control the dust.
Twenty-four feet wide.
Yeah, so, um, I don't really know how we're gonna control the dust other than I was told that it's gonna be very, very small material and it's gonna be packed down really, really well. So, I have a, a dirt driveway at my house and it's the same. It's just packed really, really tight, the material and-
That's crushed rock too, and I have-
Yeah, and we don't seem to have any problems with the dust on that.
A lot of traffic.
On the road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How long is that road from, uh, Dole's Ridge into the brewery?
Uh, probably about a third of a mile.
Yeah.
Um, I would ask if, since we've already done one sidewalk, does anyone feel the need to do another sidewalk?
Yeah.
First lady.
Yeah, I'd like to see where it's gonna go.
You'd like to do it?
I never made the first one.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, then we should do.
I didn't make the first one either, so.
Oh, you didn't? So, there are members who haven't been? Okay, then we definitely should. Um, when do you wanna do it?
November.
What you?
Weekday.
Weekday? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, you, you did, you did a sidewalk way out where this is gonna go, the last side?
No, no, he didn't.
I didn't make it that though. Somebody, you did it on a Saturday, that's what it was here.
So, the, you know, we probably-
And somebody pointed, pointed to me. I had gone there after the fact and somebody pointed to, well, that's where it's going.
It's go, it looks like rain towards the end of the week, so I, we need to do the sidewalk before the public hearing. So, we can either do it like maybe on Wednesday at four o'clock or five o'clock, if that works for people. Um, or, what, what works for you, ma'am?
So, uh, for me would be either Friday of this week or next week early. So, the next meeting is two weeks from today would be the seventeenth, right?
It's the third Monday of, yeah.
Seventeenth.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, yeah. Do you, I think my hearing of the weather forecast today was that Friday could be pretty rainy.
Okay.
Do you wanna do it Monday or Tuesday of next week? Would that work?
Who's going, just the, us four?
Well, no, anybody who wants to go.
I actually can't go Monday or Tuesday, so, but don't plan around me. It's all good.
Well, we could do Wednesday of next week. I mean, do you have any limitations, Darrell?
No.
Three thirty, four o'clock.
In the afternoon, as long as it's in the afternoon.
Yeah, that's the same here.
Anybody else have limitations?
How about next, a week from Wednesday at four o'clock?
The twelfth.
Yes, would that work?
Yeah, absolutely.
Could you have someone, it doesn't have to be you, it can be just one of your project managers or whatever.
So, the, the June twelfth?
So, it's June twelfth?
Four o'clock.
At four o'clock? Okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions, Darrell? If not, is there a motion to-
I got a question.
Oh, so, I'm sorry, sorry.
So, you have, um, different plans other than this, and your plans are gonna go by?
So, like construction drawings?
Yeah, like, uh, you know?
Yeah, well, you should require a plot plan.
How many people do you think are gonna fit in that building and does a parking accommodate, where do you think's gonna fit in that building?
Um.
The parking lot looks fairly big, but I mean, you could have-
So, we figured that there would probably be additional parking blocked off for like certain events in the field. So, we would take some barrels and we would, we would string them up. But I think that the pavilion, um, I think it has a capacity of close to a hundred or so.
Didn't you have a parking, uh, design with your first application?
Uh.
Do you remember? I don't.
Can't recall.
This really isn't a site plan anyway.
No, no, we would, we would need something that, yeah.
Yeah, you know, something more than-
Yeah.
Is, is the, is that area behind the brewery, is that the parking for the, for the house?
Yes, and in front of it.
And in front, okay, both the front and backs are probably-
Yeah.
Yeah, generally-
How many people you gonna have in there?
Six, maybe, eight?
Generally, we require a plot plan that shows where the building's gonna be, it's an engineer-designed, and it shows parking spaces to accommodate the number of people that the building involves.
So, the steel building will have engineered plans that I'll submit. I figured I, I would have to submit that to the CEO.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have those now, but the steel building, they provide them with that?
Yeah, we would need that before the public hearing if at all possible.
So, can I, um, okay, I can try and get that, but I could always come back for that as a phase two, right?
A phase two? This is phase two.
Right, so I guess what I'm saying is you could give me approval on the pavilion and if I don't have the engineer drawings in two weeks, could I come back in July with those for an approval on that part of the project?
How does the board feel about that?
You know, this really isn't a site plan.
Oh, I know, that's why I'm saying he's gonna, he's gonna-
I mean, he needs, he needs a, a much more information than what's on this plan.
Yeah, we don't even know how, what the road-
We don't even know how big of anything is.
Anything about the road.
And I don't know, do you, are you dealing with somebody who knows our zoning? Because you have to have, for every, every, according to how big the building is, you need a certain amount of parking.
Okay.
You'd have to show the size of that.
That's why they need to work with, with, um, the code officer to, to go through.
Yeah, so I, my understanding, again, this is just my understanding, is that I go through him to get the final permits and that he, we give him the construction drawings and stuff.
He gets, gives the final permits after we approve it.
Okay.
So, it goes through us first.
Okay.
And, and, and that requires the detailed plot plan. And then once we've approved it, then you deal with him in the building, uh, the permits and, and, you know, he makes sure you build the road to the way it's supposed to be and that type of thing.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, do you think that by the seventeenth, you would have a plot plan? Do you have, do you have an engineer that can draw it up for you?
Uh, I don't know. I'm hopeful, that's for sure. We'll see.
'Cause I, I'm sorry, we didn't have la, have the, um, material from the last application.
I've got the key to my office. I'll go and see if I can put my hand-
I've got the key to my office, I'll go and see if I can put my hand on it.
But I don't think that there was a plot plan on that either, and we moved the building, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, yeah, so he'll need it.
Yeah.
So you don't want me to run?
You 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 should find it and and um if any of us want to see it before we go in the sidewalk, we can come in and and look at it, but I can't remember what you submitted, I'm sorry, I can't.
I'll get it.
Okay.
So what is the, what is the parking ordinance?
Um so many spaces per square footage of the building.
Of the building?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Now, that would be.
And those have to be, those have to be permanent parking spaces?
They usually are, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And so many spaces, you know, um for employees and how many the, how, whatever the capacity of the building is.
Okay.
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 You must have an, uh, I don't say you must, I don't know, do do you have a near, um, an engineer that has worked with you on your other facilities that could?
Um.
Or were they all in the city and you didn't?
Yeah, I mean, I've never really had to have engineered drawings for anything up to this point in much of what I've done, I've gotten it passed through without having many engineered, yeah, I've never had an engineer do anything, but I can.
Have anybody asked for a plot plan?
Nope.
Where it, may I ask where your other facilities are?
Uh, like.
Were they existing places?
Yeah, there are existing places, we've never really built anything new this, this large, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I I I I don't, as I say, I can't remember when you were in here last, but I I I don't know whether we discussed this with you when you had your first application or not, I can't honestly remember, I'd have to go back and and look at the minutes to see what was said.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I thought that this would suffice, but we can definitely try and do more, I have no idea if I'll be able to get a uh an engineer to actually get something more uh precise than that, I guess he'll have to call in and talk to.
Yeah, talk to Craig.
Craig and find out what Craig wants on the drawing, and then we'll see if he can get it done.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, you gotta have everything on the plot plan, I mean, you gotta show the distances and the.
Yeah, where the.
All of that, it's gotta be, it's gotta be pretty precise, I mean, you just can't.
Okay.
Drive four takes in the ground, so this is where it's gonna be, it's gonna be something.
Okay.
Off the lot lines and.
Alright, so a surveyor has to do it?
It it should be, should be surveyed and and uh.
Well, I would assume you had it surveyed when you purchased it, unless no way.
Well, we're in the middle of that process right now because, because there's some different things that are going on with.
Thank you.
Um with the survey, but yeah, so a surveyor would do the plot plan or an engineer would do it?
Surveyor could do it.
Surveyor could do it.
Surveyor could do it.
Okay.
Look, if if you, if you haven't seen it started yet, it's gonna be hot for us to actually.
Yeah, yeah.
Even a month.
I have.
And you know, the reason I mention the road is because the road may not be a problem for you, but it may be a problem for the people that are around you. I'm sure that's gonna be one of the things that's gonna come up and how you're gonna have to control the dust, it's something that, you know, for you to be aware of.
You could put that reclaim on.
The people around me are, I don't have any neighbors except for Earl and Nancy.
Well.
Well, but we we did have quite a turnout, cause all the abudders, that you've got your whole list of abudders, they uh uh they all get notified and remember they, quite a few of them came to the public hearing last time.
Okay, so you think that dust is gonna be a problem for people down the road?
Or across the street?
I don't think that it's across the street.
I don't think across the street, cause it's spec.
This is like way back on the orchard.
I don't know that that's a problem for you, but that's gonna be a problem, they're gonna wanna know how you're gonna control it.
Yeah. I didn't see any of plot plans.
I mean, I, again, I have a driveway at my house, I don't control it, I mean, I I I don't know what.
How many cars a day do you think are walking down that road?
Right, that's the difference.
Some days none, some days, certain months, a lot on weekends.
I think if you speak with an engineer who's used to dealing with planning boards and and understands zoning ordinance, you, they will be able to show you and tell you and work with you to accomplish what needs to be done.
Okay.
I um I don't, there is no plot plan in here, it's just these same kinds of of um pictures kind of thing, and I'd have to review the minutes to see what we talked about, but.
Okay.
I can pull the minutes if you'd like to.
That's okay, we, we.
No, no, that's alright, nice.
You don't have a cutaway on what the road's gonna, how they're gonna build the road, anything like that?
Well, you know, there's a difference between a road and a driveway, half of, half of us are calling it a driveway and half of us are calling it a road.
Again, I was, I I thought that the road guy comes in and gets the permit and gives you the information that you need to get the permit, that's what, that's how I understood after my conversations with them and then just, you know, that you guys approved the the thing and the the project and then this gentleman approves as we hand him construction drawings, so that's.
We can't approve a project if we don't know what it's gonna look like.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought that that's what that showed you, what it looked like, but.
Well, it it does, an overview, physical overview, but that's why um, yeah.
No problem.
Okay.
If somebody had mentioned that a while ago, I would've done that for sure, definitely.
Have you talked to engineers and surveyors?
I have a surveyor that's doing survey work for the, for the purchase of the property.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you you can't even, technically in this town, you can't even do a house without a plot plan.
Okay.
No, technically, you can't.
Or a shed.
Or a shed.
Or some pool or anything, e- everything required of a plot plan.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm a pretty diligent person, if I had known that, I would've done that, but I I didn't know that, so.
I don't know if all of us realized he was coming in for phase two either, when he was coming in, I thought it was so.
Well, that's why I was asking, maybe I could seek approval for the first part and then come back for the second part.
Yeah, I mean, that would give you an eye, give us a better idea what you're doing, but you still need to do a plot plan so we know.
Right, so it doesn't even make sense then, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it all at once, so.
Yeah, we're gonna, you need something, cause in order to start a pavilion, he's gotta start that whole road all the way in there.
Yeah, there there should be some sort of a cutaway that shows what, how he's gonna build that road.
Well, again, that, my understanding is that Rob Hanson, the road builder, gives you that information.
Does he have that information now?
Well, yes, then you need to get it from him and present it to the planning board.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
I thought I'd give it to him so he can approve the permit.
Hmm, no, no, the whole project, the the, the way it functions is that the project has to be approved by the planning board.
Right, but I didn't know that you specifically looked at like road construction drawings, I thought you approved the the project
The concept.
and this gentleman looks at the, to make sure that you're gonna build it the right way, so that was my understanding, that's kind of how it was explained to me.
Well, actually, he's gotta build it to the zoning and town zoning law, not the way he wants to build it, he's gonna build the town, town zoning.
Right, exactly. Right.
Well, right, and it, he's the representative that makes sure that things are built to a certain way.
He's the enforcer, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
You have an engineer in mind?
No.
Can, are we, uh, can you recommend an engineer to?
Or, you know, but.
I mean, I don't know if you.
I have a surveyor, I mean, maybe he can bust one out, but I'm sure he's probably gonna tell me he's, needs twelve weeks and, you know.
Yeah.
Might be, if if you thought he could do something like that pavilion area.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the, cause you you said tonight that you moved it where you had it last year.
We did, it was where the steel building's going now.
Okay, so you're moving it further out?
Yeah.
So I mean, I don't know, it's up to you guys, I guess if you wanna somehow approve the project.
He needs a, he needs a complete plot plan, showing where everything is, dimensions of it, elevations, how the road's gonna be built.
You're gonna design.
I mean, I'm talking of what's in the zoning, I'm not talking about what I want.
I know, I know, I understand.
Do you, do you have a building design too, the plans for that, if you have the height and the width and the?
Well, I think a lot of that has, some of those drawings already have that information on it, but I, again, the we plan to give you more detailed construction drawings just to get the permit.
The only measurements is just the, that the brewery building itself is sixty by a hundred and twenty feet, but that's just, you know.
Yeah.
It's not like the height or what's in it or anything.
Okay.
The people you buy the metal building for would have a set of prints.
I would think so.
Yeah.
And this, even this, I mean, you must have, this posted beam building would have, is structural, so that would have to be done by an engineer, you must have prints on that.
I don't have them yet, I, again, I, I'll just repeat it myself again, I, I'm just going with what my understanding was is that you approved the project and then I give the plans to this gentleman to make sure that we meet the code and the ordinance and then give us the permit.
Well, he's gonna issue you the permits and make sure it's done right, but he's not the one who approves the project.
Okay.
Tomorrow if you could pull them.
No, I understand that, I figured you approve the project and then he makes sure that I follow the rules.
Right, but right now you have no rules, cause we don't even know how big the pavilion is or 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 the road, anything about the road, or that other building right now, other than it's sixty by a hundred and twenty, don't say how the height.
You need structural plans for that. Actually, for the buildings, where the public buildings, the structural plans need to be signed by an engineer.
But that building, the steel building?
For those buildings, yeah, public buildings.
The pub, the timber frame as well?
Yeah, they're public buildings.
Okay.
Would it be have?
You're not having people go from the brewery, uh, other than the workers.
I mean, eventually we might do tours and stuff, but.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a building that people are gonna, I mean, it needs to be, a house has to be structurally, the prints they give you a house are structurally, and a a house prints right now, according to us, don't have to be signed by an engineer. I think there's some places in Maine where they have to be, but not in Lemington.
But the pavilion you want to be signed by an engineer?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, yeah, because the engineer is the one who designs.
Myself, public buildings, so.
The, yeah, and he's the one who designs uh the work, the loads, you know, for the.
Are you clearing your head about what the plot plan should look like, or do you need a sample of one that is cl- make it clearer for you in your mind?
Well, I'll ask the surveyor, and I'm sure he probably knows what that is and.
And he can always come in and talk with Craig about it too.
Yeah.
It would be helpful for you to know in your head what that looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, the surveyor should be able to do a plot plan for you.
Yeah, we're sorry, it'll take measuring, I mean, it'll take another three days for you.
He needs to make the plot plan, he needs to fit the zone though, so he'd have to know, know about that.
Is he a local surveyor?
I forgot, what is it, a hundred and twenty?
Yeah, he's in Gorm.
Oh, then he knows, is he, uh, uh, is he with like a company or is he an individual?
Uh, yeah, he's a company, uh, I can't remember his name, Andy Morley, I think.
I've heard the name, but I, but but then he's familiar with what local zoning ordinances are, so.
I would hope so, yeah.
I think so, yeah, I think so, are there any more questions of?
There's also some things that he would have to look into the fire department too, right?
He would always con- consult with the fire department on any, you know, if there are issues, but in fact, if he wanted to come with us on the sidewalk on Wednesday, we'd let him know so he could come and and uh address any issues.
I just sent him away.
That's alright, send him an email.
He says, do you need me? And I go, not really, no.
I question the sidewalk, we're planning on doing, like I say, we don't have something staked out.
They would've, would've just looked at grass.
Yeah, yeah.
Said we don't have any, any plans, yeah, nothing is staked out, there's nothing to see.
Well, if people wanted to just go look at the site, they could, I mean, you know, we, we did that last time, we we saw the site, he basically had flags where, I think there were flags where the building was going to be and that kind of thing, and uh gave us an idea of, you know, in proportion where the building would be on the lot, so they could.
It's a pretty big building, sixty by a hundred and twenty, that's, that's as big as Trico down there.
Yeah, seventy-two hundred.
And that would have to have parking for that sidewalk?
Well, I don't remember exactly, it's what, a hundred and twenty square feet for a green, what is that, I can't look.
But.
But that building would need the same amount of parking as that's required for like the pavilion, even though it's not a public building?
It doesn't, doesn't make sense to me that he would have to have the same number of parking spaces for the, for the facility, I mean, obviously for the public facility, but for the brewing facility, it would seem there would have to be a parking for the employees.
That would make more sense.
But it doesn't make logical sense to me that you have all this area carved out and paved or whatever when it's not gonna be used, so that's just my personal opinion. But I don't have the, the luck.
Well, I mean, we, we did that room different for one Carla Gaines once, I mean, we made him have.
He hasn't done anything, we didn't make, he hasn't done anything, that's a very poor excuse, that's, that's, that's another issue altogether.
No, but I thought, the way we told him he had to figure his parking.
Yeah.
Well, it's cause it's all open space.
Yeah.
Well.
So I would suggest that you have your surveyor speak with Craig and talk to him about an engineer to do the plot plan and and when you say that, that engineer or the, or the surveyor will know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
And he'll give you some ideas as to when he can get that done and um, like I said, we'll, um, unless you notify, when do you start sending out the notices, Donna, for public hearing?
I usually send them out in the first couple of days after a meeting.
Like Friday? So you, so let's say if you sent them out Friday, or is that too late?
I won't be meeting the letter of the law if I wait till Friday.
Okay, well, then you need to do whatever.
I just have a question, I mean, are are we really ready to meet with?
That's my question.
Are we really gonna be ready to meet with him on the seventeenth?
Well, that's up to him, I mean, we, we, we can, I think we need to advertise it, cause we're accepting the application and then if he needs to, um, you know.
So if I wasn't able to make the seventeenth, when would be?
The first Monday of July.
Which is July first.
Which is July fourth, probably.
No, it's not the fourth, it's the seventh.
I don't know.
I think it's July first.
Yeah.
Yeah, Wednesday's the fourth.
It is, a Wednesday's the fourth, then it would be the second.
It would be the second of July.
It'd be the eighth, June, uh, what?
No, 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 the first Monday of July is the first.
I'm looking at James.
Yeah, the fourth is a Thursday, the first is a Monday. Yeah, it's Monday, July first would be our, a meeting after the seventeenth.
Okay.
Okay, and if you want to talk in the next day or two with your surveyor and see what he says, and if you decide you'd prefer to have the public hearing July first, let Donna know.
I have a conflict July first, so.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Well, you could have your engineer here if you wanted.
Okay.
I mean, you know, you you, you don't personally have to be here, unless you wanted to be here.
Mm-hmm.
But um the the public does have to have something to verbally see as to what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So Donna, if he.
So we're at the point, you're gonna accept the application tonight?
Well, I'm going to make a motion to accept the application and then he will get to you within the next couple of days before you send out the notices to the abudders to let you know whether he wants to do the public hearing on the seventeenth or whether he prefers to move it up to the first of July.
Okay, I I can live with that.
Okay. And there, there's still gonna be a sidewalk regardless? I don't personally, I'm not gonna go, cause I was there before, but I don't know, do you guys still wanna do a sidewalk?
I don't see much sense in doing a sidewalk until it hits a plot plan.
Yeah, I think I'm all set.
So there won't be any sidewalks?
Really know what's going on.
But what will be the June twelfth?
So, we're gonna cancel that.
Yeah.
Postponed.
Okay, all right, I would entertain a motion to accept the uh Blaze Brewing Facility application, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All votes in favor?
I like the presentation.
Thank you. Am I all set?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, thank you for coming in.
You've still got my phone number, haven't you, for the office?
I do, yes.
Sure does, yeah, okay, all right. All right, let's just.
You know, he has a lot of things in here that he's gonna run into, if he, I mean, what about uh these laws on the amount of roof space, uh roof uh area you have as opposed to runoff and all kinds of stuff here, this is not a small project. That building's a big building, that's as big as Trico, I don't know if Trico, I can't remember.
You had to do ditches around there, hold on to the.
I mean, this is, I mean, this is, I mean, I can't even believe it, this is a nice.[1756.74]
It, it's pretty, but that's all it is.
That's all it is.
It's just pretty.
He's nowhere near ready, he won't be ready July first, I don't believe.
Not this year.
I don't think so either.
No, if he can get something longer.
Well, I think he, unfortunately, I think he misunderstood, and I am gonna go back and review the minutes of when we last met with him.
Well, 'cause he thought it was just the concept.
He, he may have misunderstood or we may not have been clear in what we said to him, so um.
Well, you can look at it that way, but.
Well, he's.
I have his old plans ready, he had an all yet, was a pavilion.
But he's. Right, exactly, he he just had the same color thing, all right.
But it wasn't, it wasn't a site plan.
Let's do the minutes of May sixth.
Pretty drawn.
Yeah. There's no site plan.
Did we do these before, was this our last meeting, Donna?
I checked today, we didn't have a meeting in.
Right, we didn't have one.
In the middle of May.
Right.
So we haven't approved these meetings?
We have not.
No. No, last meeting we had was May sixth.
All right, okay. All right.
Can't build a building without engineered plans. You just can't, I mean, I suppose you can get the plans to the building, they're signed by an engineer, but there's a lot, a lot more to it than that. You gotta have the septic system designs. It'll show us runoff.
We probably need to come up with a list of things for him that he needs because.
Well, he can, he should get that from Craig.
What he really should do with the size of this project is, he should hire an engineer to help improve this.
Yeah, I think that's a good.
Yeah.
Uh?
Well, I think we made that clear, pretty clear tonight, that he needs engineered plans, so.
But he, he would like a list of things he needs to include it, which is the septic plan, the driveway plan of the building.
Septic plan.
Well, you know, just.
He's gotta have his runoff.
I mean, why is this so different from any other business application? I mean, we've approved Trico, we've approved.
We approved who?
Trico, so why is this so different?
Yeah, well, Trico was my, Trico, we had all that for Trico.
Well, I understand, but why do we have to make a list for him? Well, I, have his engineer?
We don't, it's really up to him to, to do this.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It's not up to hell, us to help him through it.
But it's up to, you know, it.
He needs to hire an engineer, this is a big project.
Exactly, so he hires the engineer, engineer comes in and works with Craig and what the ordinance says, and and if these engineers have dealt with uh, plans like this before, so I I guess I don't under- understand why we just don't let the engineer do it. We're not, we're not doing it for the engineer, he, you know, in my mind, the engineer should know what is expected.
He talks to an engineer, they're gonna tell him what he needs to do, he needs a ro- he needs a runoff plan, he may even have to have a small farm.
Catch bases.
Emo might wanna have some, he's a bio- waste of water around there.
Probably, he's gotta talk to.
Yeah, well, I think that that's something that um Emo needs to address with him too.
I mean, maybe, is he doing that in Limmington 'cause he figured he can just come in here and get a permit and do it all?
Well, I think maybe what he's used to doing is dealing in a more urban environment where the building already exists.
Yeah, distant buildings.
And he's never built in a country atmosphere.
Maybe they're waiting when he finds out.
Well, maybe, all right, let's do the minutes of, of May sixth.
Okay, sounds good.
I mean, he's gonna have to, pretty wide road here, did he put any, how wide the road is to the pool?
Yeah, twenty four feet.
Yeah, at least, I, it is.
Yeah. And mini- minimum inside radius of curved roadway.
Joyce.
I can't even read that.
Fifty feet in the form of the roadway construction with.
I'm a little hard time concentrating because of the. Yeah, g- guys, can we focus on the minutes, please, and then you guys can talk about whatever?
Do you have something, uh, Victoria?
No, we haven't finished.
I think I'm just looking through it.
I don't think so. Oh, good. I'm ready.
It was just a couple minor things that I saw, nothing, nothing major.
Okay.
I got my, do you want me to take?
Victoria isn't quite through yet.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Oh, that's okay, no, I'm I'm good actually.
No.
Uh-huh, yep, Grace.
You're good, Joyce is good.
Grace has.
I just had a couple minor things.
I'm so happy that only one person has comments.
So on page one, under public hearing.
Yeah.
Um, consistent with everything else, instead of she, um, on paragraph two under public hearing, it should say Chair Foley. She is just kinda nebulous there.
Where?
Public hearing, page one. And instead of she.
I knew someone was gonna question that, I knew it when I did it.
Well, every other paragraph, you started that way, and I just feel like in consistency.
Yeah, you're right. I was trying to sneak it in.
So you were testing me, I know.
Yeah, I, I, I hear ya.
And like all the other ones, they start with the, it's about, and then on page four, um, question three, you just need chair in front of Foley.
They are. Question three, Chair Foley emphasized?
On page. Yeah, you just put Foley, you don't put Chair Foley there.
I can do that.
Yeah, give me the title, babe.
Yeah, exactly, um, but everything seemed pretty clear other than that, I didn't have any.
Any other comments? Seeing on all those in favor of approving the minutes of May sixth with the two corrections. Is there a second?
I seconded.
All in favor?
Who, who made the motion?
Very good. I did.
Joyce did, okay.
I did reiterate it clearly, is there any other business or anything to bring up? So it looks like we have, uh, right now, other than um um, the Blaze Orchard thing, if we don't get any more applications, uh, we may not have a meeting the seventeenth, but if he's prepared to come back, we'll, so it's sort of nebulous right now, but we'll, I'll let everybody know.
Like if he's ready by fall.
Right, so um, anyway. No other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion, we adjourn.
There are second. Second in favor?
Would, is there any bullet points for the?
Um, no, w- um, well, we we just voted to adjourn, so, yeah, um.
Adhere to the meeting and then talk about.
Um, okay, so have we closed the meeting?
Yes.
Yes. We got.